All this meeting of the WJCC School Board to order, can I have a motion to certify closed session, please?
Mr. Chair, I certified to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only set of public matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers? Oh, excuse me, and Mr. Dowell?
I saw Dr. Beers say aye.
Oh, he did, okay.
Aye.
He might be muted. And aye. Thank you, Ms. Aller.
Oh, sorry.
With that, we'll move on to item 3.01, Public Hearing on Fiscal Year 23 Operating Budget. Can I have a motion to move into that hearing, please?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. And our Parliamentarian, Ms. Hummel, do we have any speakers this evening for the public hearing on the budget?
No, Mr. Chair, there are no comment cards for the budget.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. With that, we will move on to item 4.01, Our Pledge of Allegiance. If everyone would mind standing with me. Thank you. In the future, we will be looking for volunteers to lead us in our Pledge of Allegiance. I'm really pleased that Mr. Kelly, our former chair, brought that back and instituted it as a function of our board. And so, really looking forward to seeing some of our youngsters, perhaps, of our schools, leading in the Pledge of Allegiance, as we did before pandemic, getting back to normal, perhaps. Item 4.02, Ms. Aller, if you'll call the roll.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mrs. Hunley?
Here.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Mr. Dowell?
Here. And if I can have a motion to approve Dr. Beers to attend this meeting via electronic communication?
I move that we allow Dr. Beers to attend this meeting via electronic communication.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Aller?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Before we go to the approval of the agenda, I did want to make notice that, I believe it is item 10.02 now. During our closed session, we had a personnel investigation we have added to our agenda, 10.02, Approval of the Personnel Investigation. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as now presented?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as now presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. And Ms. Aller?
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley?
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo?
Aye.
Mr. Dowell?
Aye. Thank you. And that leads us to 5.01, Students and Staff Recognitions. Ms. Hummel, and if Ms. Ordigo would join me down front?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we are excited to recognize several students in schools for outstanding accomplishments. We begin recognitions with Lafayette High School's One Act Team. Joining us on behalf of the team are students LT Centolanza and Jane Howlett. Would the students and theater teacher Suzanne McCory please come forward to be recognized? The Lafayette Theater Rams One Act Team was named VHSL Class III State Champions. One act plays are performed in 35 minutes or less by advanced theater students. The Rams One Act Team performed the Ten Woman to defend their title against other teams in the Commonwealth. This is the second year in a row that the Lafayette High School One Act Team has won the state championship and their 15th consecutive year competing in the state competition. Although we only have a few members of the team with us tonight, we congratulate the entire One Act Team and Ms. McCory for this outstanding accomplishment. Now, we would like to turn our attention to two division schools. We will start with Matthew Whaley. Would Principal Mike Stutt, former PTA President Sarah Lictel, and current PTA President Melissa Reeves, please join us up front at this time? The National PTA School of Excellence Distinction is awarded to schools for their ongoing collaboration with the PTA organization to implement best practices and family engagement that strengthen the relationships between home and school. Matthew Whaley and their PTA organization have earned this honorable distinction for their team approach to uplifting their community and working toward the success of every student. Please congratulate the entire Matthew Whaley community on this outstanding accomplishment. Next, we would like to recognize War Hill High School. War Hill High School has been named a National PTA School of Excellence for 2020 through 2022. Would Dr. Jeff Carroll, Principal, and Michael Willen, PTSA President, please join us to be recognized? Recognition of this title, War Hill staff and their PTSA organization are committed to partnership and open the lines of communication within the entire school community to enrich the educational experience and overall well-being for all students. With a desire to build effective family-school partnerships, their collaborative approach supports success throughout the school community. Congratulations goes out to the entire War Hill family. It's an honor to celebrate the hard work of our schools as they continue to build inclusive and welcoming communities. Mr. Chair, this concludes recognitions. We will have additional celebrations at the regular meeting in February.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
You are welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. With that, we would like to move on to item 6.01, For WJCC Schools 2021 to 2022. Dr. Heron?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're pleased to bring you an update this evening in our forward WJCC schools. And I know Mr. Kiefer is going to lead off and introduce our health team again this evening, who have guided us for over the last two years. Mr. Kiefer, over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I appreciate that. Good evening, Board members. This evening, we are pleased to be joined by our three members of our school health advisory team. To my far left is Dr. Carrie Dolan, who works at Wayman Mary as epidemiologist. To my immediate right is Ms. Kendra Robinson, who's a nurse practitioner and works at the Old Town Facility. And then Dr. Chris Powell is a noted pediatrician within our community. She's to my far right. They've joined us this evening to give us some information relative to their perceptions and thoughts around protecting and ensuring that our students and staff have a safe learning environment. What I'm looking for is the slide deck, I think, that says School Health Advisory Committee? That's what I'm looking for. Thank you so much. I think, Dr. Dolan, you're leading us off?
Yeah.
You're welcome. You want to sit right there, or you want to come to the podium?
I can sit right here.
Okay.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
It's good to see you again. I'm Carrie, and I had the opportunity to talk to you before, along with Chris, and we are joined tonight with our colleague Kendra, who hasn't presented to you before, but has been an active participant in this process throughout the last two years. So, thanks for having us. What I'm going to do is tell you a little bit about the cases, and then I'm going to turn it over to Chris, who's going to talk about masking, and Kendra is going to end talking a little bit about vaccinations. And then, we are happy to take any questions that you guys might have. So, it's no surprise that there's a lot of COVID out there. Omicron is here, and we are all experiencing it, whether or not it's ourselves, if it's a family member, a coworker, or we certainly know somebody that has it. It's increasing in 35 of our districts across the Commonwealth, and we expect for the surge to peak somewhere in the next few days, so around January 23rd. That's not a magic number. It is one piece of the puzzle, but we do think that we will reach that peak soon, and we will start to see a decline in cases. When we have a surge in cases, along with that comes a lot of fear, and that fear is normal. So is the stress and the anxiety and a little bit of grief over what people think should be happening at any point in time. I think it's important that people remember, this is now our fifth wave. So, for those of us who has been riding this wave for the last two years, this is not new. And we are in a very different place in January 2022 than where we were, you know, in 2020. We know a lot more about the data and the science. We know a lot more about the interventions. We know what works. We know what doesn't. If you think back to summer of 2020, a lot of us were spraying down our groceries in the garage, or marking down these hallways so that students walked one way and not the other. We're not in that place anymore. I see a world out there where we are going to be living with endemic COVID, and I see a way that we can all work together to get to that point. I do see a world where we are going to have an off-ramp off of interventions, but we're just not there right now, not this week. But I see that that's coming, and that it is a reality. I think it's important that people not panic, and remember that we do have a lot of tools. We have a lot of data. We have a lot of science, and we know a safe path forward, and we can give you information that you need in order to help as part of that puzzle. So, the font is a little small. I think I need a magnifying glass from here. But we've got some questions that I, thank you, that I will kick it off for Chris. So, the way that we set this up tonight is to try and address things that people ask us often. And some of that, what I just talked to you about is a general overall perspective. Like I said, Chris is going to talk to you about the masks, and then Kendra's going to talk to you about the vaccines. So, Chris, you have two questions. The first one is, we've talked a lot about this mitigation and prevention in the last 16 months. From your perspective, can you detail the ones that are most impactful to students and staff safety? Second, based on your understanding of the data for Williamsburg James City County, and a majority of the COVID cases we're seeing in schools are being brought into the schools, not being transmitted within the schools, are there strategies that we can use to help limit this?
Before we answer that, I do want to clarify for us and for those that are listening, this might have looked like a dialogue between professionals. I think you're reading questions that you've heard from the public. Is that right?
We're reading, do you want to clarify exactly?
Yes, these are questions that come forward to us via the public, via email.
Thank you.
Questions you may have received yourselves.
I want to make sure that was clear for everybody. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, good evening. It's nice to see everybody again. Thank you, Carrie, for starting that off. I do think, I do agree that things are in a very different place now than where we started, and there have been a lot of changes. But mandate or no mandate, our health advisory recommendations on mitigation strategies are not changed. So, you see this slide in front of you that I showed about a year ago. I think we were having this meeting almost exactly a year ago. It was different. It was the same slide, but we were working on a way to make sure that we could transition our students and staff back to school, from virtual to in-person, in a healthy environment. So, we talked about this visual, and, you know, here we are today, a year later, with all those changes that we discussed. But we still like this slide. That's why we brought it to you. We still like these mitigation layers. We still feel that each one of these is super important. We still feel that not one of them alone is 100% effective, but it's the combination of the mitigation layers that make it work. So, if we look and break down this slide, you know, we have to the left, personal responsibilities, and to the right, shared responsibilities. So, to go through each one, we all know we're not perfect at each one, and that's how it works well together. But if you look at the first one, you know, stay home if you're sick. That's very important, and that continues to be our advice. The second one's masking, and I know there's a lot of controversy about it right now. But, and we will kind of answer all your questions about it, but we still feel that it's a very important tool in this layer of mitigation to keep our community and our students healthy. The next layer is hand hygiene, and the following one is avoiding touching your face. So, we see our kids in the school buildings, and they may not be perfect at this. Some kids aren't washing their hands for 20 seconds with soap and water, and some kids are wearing their mask below their nose, but it's the combination. Maybe they're not great at washing their hands, but they're wearing their mask right. Or maybe, maybe they are. Or maybe they are good at washing their hands, but maybe they're touching their mask too much. So not each one is perfect, and it never will be for any of us, but it's sort of the combination of them that makes it most effective. If you keep going to the right, you're going to, you know, do things like, you know, if you feel like you're in a crowded space, indoors, we're going to try to space out a little bit. And then to the right is the shared responsibilities, which gets to the second part of that question. Yes, a lot of cases are brought into the schools. How can, what can we do as a community when we're not in school? And these are things like, you know, if we're not feeling well to go get testing done. It's to follow through on contact tracing recommendations. If you're told to isolate or quarantine, you want to do your part and follow those guidelines. We do want to work on from a school-level ventilation, and I know that there was funding for that this year, and we made a lot of changes. Government messaging and financial support is important. The financial side of this is enormous, but we've gotten some good funding and provide, we're provided with a lot of testing options now through the schools, so we've gotten support there. And then vaccines, and Kendra's going to talk more about vaccines, but it's the multiple layers that lead to a healthy school community that, you know, where our goals are to keep everybody healthy as best we can and to keep our students in-person and not transition back to virtual. So the next slide, I have three slides. The question was, "Sounds like you're saying that wearing masks is still a critical strategy. Why do you believe that?" Well, as I said in the last, with the last slide, is it's a strategy. There are multiple strategies. There's multiple layers, and it's one of them. They're simple. They're accessible. You know, kids have done fairly well. Adults, I mean, none of us love it, but, you know, it has been an effective tool. And we need to maximize all our layers of protection to help limit the spread, to protect our vulnerable, to protect our vulnerable kids in school or vulnerable relatives at home and those that, you know, are maybe not able to get vaccinated or not able to wear masks. And then if you want to look at studies, there are a lot of studies. I know they're fraught with error, and they're not perfect, and a lot of them have been debated over and over again. There's about 20 of them that are listed on the CDC site. I chose one because I talked about this study last year. It's the Massachusetts study, and in this study, they looked at 70 schools and over 33,000 enrolled students, and they found that the attack rate of coronavirus was 11% for unmasked versus 1.7% for masked. So I like to bring that study back in since we used that last year. We used that same, the same information to help us with the distancing, to go from six to three feet, if you recall. So I brought that one into this slide. And for the good news, the next slide, the question is, "When should we consider easing the mask requirement? Are there specific data points that we would recommend?" And the good news is yes, that people are talking about this. We are working on this. In fact, I sit on a school health committee for the state, and one of my colleagues, Leah Rolland, who is a pediatrician in Norfolk, actually wrote a paper about something called dynamic masking, and I can share it with anybody if they want after. But basically, she said, "We need to start thinking about, how are we going to get these masks off? What do we need to do? What are our data points? How do we know when it's a good time for that?" And she said to look at two things, and the paper lays it out very nicely, but basically, look at your school burden first. Think about things like, okay, how's your staffing right now? Are you at a critical level? Is it a good time to take that risk? Or are you pretty well-staffed right now? And it might be a good time to challenge it. So you always want to look at your school burden first and foremost. How's your staffing? What about the students? How many kids are in or out? If the impact is low, then you want to proceed to community transmission. And then we get back to the same things that we've talked before, like number of new cases in a seven-day period and test positivity. And then you base your decisions off of that. So if the school burden's low and the community transmission's low, that might be a good time to take the masks off or challenge it. But this is called the dynamic masking, you know, kind of strategy, in that it's dynamic. It changes. You can, you can challenge it and reassess after three to four weeks and then go from there. So it's, 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 it may be something to consider moving forward. You might want to, you know, I can share the paper with everybody, but it may be a strategy to use when you start thinking about how to move forward. And then I think I'm going to turn it over to Kendra to talk about vaccination.
So we talked about masking as a strategy, but vaccines are working. They are effective. And now, a year ago, they didn't have vaccines available for children age five to 11, and now we do. So we're able to take advantage of that level of protection for our students. All children age five and older should be vaccinated as recommended by the American Academy of Pediatrics. We do have some parents who are concerned about kids who've had COVID already, feeling that they're protected enough with their antibodies that they build. However, you have better protection if you're fully vaccinated, even if you've had COVID before. So the CDC recommends that even if your child has had COVID, that they still get vaccinated and complete the series. And the vaccines are available, readily available everywhere in our community right now, so that's something that we should encourage folks to take advantage of. Vaccination rates are climbing slowly. Right now, we're at about, between five- to 11-year-olds where have received their first dose, we're at 27%. And then for those who are ages 12 to 17, about 15.9 million have received at least one dose, which is about 64%, and 13.3 million are fully vaccinated at 53%. So those numbers could be better. Vaccines are effective, about 90% effective, over 90% effective, in preventing severe COVID disease. So I think it's important to note that it prevents severe COVID disease, not necessarily prevent you from getting COVID, but it will keep you out of the hospital and prevent you from having really horrible multi-system inflammation syndrome, which can be really detrimental to the health of a child. It also can prevent hospitalizations. It can prevent really, really severe illness for our children. We really want to do our best to protect them with our vaccines. Adverse reactions are no more than what you would see with maybe a flu vaccine, where you might get a little headache, maybe a fever, some body aches. But we've been watching the studies, and the reactions to the vaccines are not as bad as what people make them out to be. It's as simple as all the other vaccines that you would get, maybe an MMR or varicella vaccine, where you might have a little illness for 24 to 48 hours that then resolves over time as your body starts to adjust and build antibodies. There's been some concerns surrounding inflammation of the heart or myocarditis for children who get vaccinated. And CDC says that for every million COVID-19 vaccine doses given, there might be 0.79 cases in children five to 11, and then maybe 67 cases in kids 12 to 17. 67 sounds like a big number, but when you compare it to kids who've actually had COVID and a million children who've had COVID, there have been 450 cases of this heart inflammation that have been noted. So, you know, benefit outweighs the risk here when we start talking about vaccines for COVID for our kids. There was a study that was done in the New England Journal of Medicine. This is nearly all teenagers needing intensive care for COVID-19 were unvaccinated, and that was in a study of more than 1,000 hospital patients in the United States. So there are a lot of patients who are unvaccinated who are putting a little bit of a burden on our healthcare system right now, and those things could have been prevented with vaccines.
Are there any questions that you have?
Ms. Young?
Yes, I have a question. In light of what's going on in the Commonwealth, I just had a question about, about masking. Does, does a person wearing two masks, does that provide the same amount of protection as having two individuals with one mask?
So is the, the question is, is double masking more effective than what's the alternate that you proposed?
I mean, if you, for example, you, right now, most of us are wearing just one mask.
Yeah.
I assume, looking around the room. But if a person wore two masks, would that be just as effective as two people wearing one mask?
So the CDC guidance is to wear the most protective mask that you can wear, that fits the best, and that you'll wear consistently. Today, CDC came out and recommended that we all wear N95s or KN95s. And the reason they recommended that is because it filters out 95% of the particles in the If you can't wear an N95 or a KN95, there's a couple of other choices that they recommend. And if you can't get one of the more protective ones, then they recommend wearing a surgical mask and on top of that, putting a cloth mask. So, but honestly, it's all about which mask you'll wear and which one fits the best. The fit is incredibly important, more so than the actual material. It's making sure that stuff isn't getting around the edges. Did that answer your question? Or were you, I think?
That didn't answer my question.
It didn't? Well, we also, I don't know if you guys remember the slides where they did, they masked the control in the case. I don't know if you remember that. And, and it had to be both, both had to be masked, rather than just one wear a double mask. It's the case that's sick is the one that's most likely to transmit it. So, so we really need both the case and the exposure to wear a mask for it to be effective. Does that answer it?
That's more clear. Thank you.
Okay.
Along Ms. Young's question, you're talking about both being masked and it being most effective. And I am remembering that slide. Can you help us recall if that's 100% effectiveness? What is it reduced to? Do you recall?
Yeah, it was pretty good. I think we were focusing more on distancing, because remember, we had like six feet, three feet, no feet? And I have to pull it up because I don't want to just, but it was, if we're like, if they're both masked, it's, wasn't it nearly close to 100%, I think? And that, well, maybe we'll need to send it to you. So, and that may not be the case with coronavirus, because that was an experiment in a lab, but it was very close. It was really reduce the risk. And I think we'll send the slides back.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Ms. Ordigo?
So are the masks that are worn by the majority of students and staff today scientifically proven to prevent virus transmission? Because a lot of the ones we purchase, it actually has a disclaimer on the package that says not intended to prevent virus transmission.
Yeah, so I just want maybe the message to be tonight that it's not one single mitigation strategy. And there's, you're not, no one's perfect with their mask-wearing, the type of mask, how they hand wash, how they distance. It's, that's why I think from a health perspective, it's the layers of all these things together that will help to keep our students healthy and staff healthy and keep them in-person. But there is definitely variances in how effective these masks are, for sure.
Like ranging from what to what?
It just depends. I mean, there's a lot of counterfeit masks out there, so, you know, and it depends on how they wear them.
So a quote-unquote counterfeit mask that's not worn properly by a child is 0% effective?
That's hard to say. I don't think we have studies on that to give that kind of information. I don't think there's been any data to say.
We haven't done, we haven't done studies with the masks that are generally used?
Yeah, there's studies on it. We'd like, yeah, like I mentioned earlier, there's over 20 studies on masking in schools. Yeah. And there's experimental models and in-person, like, you know, real-life models.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you all for being here. I really do appreciate your service to our community and your professions, but also to the school division. It's impacting thousands of people and very grateful, so thank you. And it's good to see you, Ms. Robinson. I'm glad you made it tonight. So can you help me understand? One of the arguments that I hear for sort of doing away with a masking mandate is that, as you said, Dr. Dolan, COVID's everywhere, right? So, so why bother, right? Why bother wearing a mask? I hear that it's part of a larger, one piece of multiple layers of mitigation, but since this virus seems to want to spread anyway, why, what's the importance of masking? Could you just help us understand that, please, just from your perspective, if you don't mind?
So I think the part that resonated a lot with me was thinking about this dynamic masking and how we can start to move away from having the mask, because that gets at the point at why are we wearing them in the first place? And so if you look at Chris's slide, there were two pieces to it, thinking about the school burden of cases. Right now, we don't have a lot of school transmission occurring in school transmission. It's coming from outside the community, and then it's brought into the schools. And then thinking about the capacity that exists. So the students and staff that are out, your administrators that are out. And then the second piece is community transmission. I think that we have three main interventions at work. We have the vaccines, we have the boosters, and we have the masks. And based on where you are with your ability to navigate the burden of disease, then you can take away the strategy. So I think, I don't think that's particularly clear. What I'm, what I'm trying to say is that, do you have enough teachers to teach? Do you have enough bus drivers to drive the buses? Do you, are you able to deliver in-person education in a way that's consistent and high quality? If you are, then maybe it's the time you can start thinking about moving away from some of these strategies. If you're at a place where there's a lot of cases in the community, people are popping in and out all the time, you have a lack of infrastructure where you can keep sustainable education occurring, then maybe it's not the time to take it away, because you might have an increase in cases that you can't then, it takes away your options. And so I think you have to really think not just about what we're presenting to you, which is the public health side. We're really trying to stick to talking to you just about the health, but it's just a piece of the puzzle. There's a whole other operational piece that you guys are going to know more about than we do on this committee that you've got to take into account. And if you can manage that whole other operational piece without your mask, then I think you could go in that direction. I'm just not sure. I mean, I really am not sure if you can. And so that's, that's my thought when we go to thinking about taking off the mask.
Right. Thank you. And that segues nicely into my next question, and this is, I guess, sort of asking you your sort of gut feeling based on your professions. And I know you don't run schools, but as a school board member, you know, my primary interest is keeping students in school, right? That's, that's my number-one priority. All the other stuff related to COVID, you know, hospital burden, all that stuff is, you know, it matters to the community, but I've got to be laser-focused on keeping kids in school. So in your estimation, in your professional opinion, does masking help keep kids in school, in your opinion, based on what you've read in the literature?
So I know that masks work. It would be great if we had higher vaccination rates. Our vaccination rates in our K through 12 are low. They're very low. And because they're so low, it gives you less options. And if you got the vaccination rates up and they were higher, you'd have more choices, but they're low. And so I think that if you start to eliminate another intervention, so you don't have, you've eliminated the vaccines, that means you're eliminating the boosters and you take away the masks, there's a big three, and then you won't have none of them. And so then it's just, we're just not sure, to be completely honest. We don't know what will happen. Maybe it'll be okay, but maybe it won't. And I haven't heard many people talk about how they want to get back to virtual education. I hear lots of people talk about how that is, has huge mental health impacts, how it's challenging for families. And so my personal opinion, because I think you asked me my personal opinion, is that eliminating vaccines, eliminating boosters, eliminating masks is a fast track to not being able to stay in school right now, given the community transmission. Now, I do see an off-ramp where, oh, there is a world that is possible where we could start to take away these masks. And I think the peak is coming, and I think we're going to be down with our cases. And then I think we can start having a dialogue about how we can not have these or have these as an option. And maybe you have different groups of people that are encouraged to wear them versus others. I mean, I don't know. We're all in the same storm, but we are in very different boats. And so maybe we have different recommendations. I'm not sure. It's just that right now, at this particular point in the pandemic, you're, it's risky. It's pretty risky to take them away with the vaccination rates where you guys are in Williamsburg James City County.
Ms. Hummel?
Speaking of vaccination rates, you said that 7.5 million, we've got 20, 27% of five-to-11-year-olds. I'm assuming this is in the country. And then 53% of 12- and 17-year-olds. What are those percentages in the Williamsburg James City County community? Do we have those numbers?
I do. They're, they're part of the next presentation, Ms. Hummel.
Oh, okay.
But I'll tell you now that five-to-11 for Williamsburg James City County, again, it's the locality, it's not necessarily school division, is 21.2%.
Okay.
And then at the 12- to 17 range, it is 43.9%.
Okay, so slightly lower than the national average. Okay, thanks.
Ms. Aldley?
Yes, I have a question. We are receiving emails about the psychological damage and trauma that masks are causing to children. The emails aren't specific, like what age. What What studies or research do you have that talks about that part of it? A lot?
Yeah, I mean, you know, the CDC has a section on this and I can't quote the exact studies right now. I'd have to look them up and share them with you. But they, they summarize to say that there is, they have not found evidence to support that. Quite the contrary, back to what Carrie said, is if, if we have, we have declared a national state of emergency for mental health in this country. Um, the American Academy of Pediatrics declared that, that this, this winter. Um, and so it, you know, because we are in a national state of emergency for mental health for kids in this country, I think it's risky to pull away a mitigation piece and, and risk going back to virtual learning, which kind of got us to that point and could spiral us back. So that's the argument. Are the masks causing psychological impairment? Or are really, are they keeping kids in school to avoid psychological impairment?
I also, I wanted, I also just want to say that I think it is important that we acknowledge and recognize that people do want to have a choice. You know, I listen to a lot of people. I talk to a lot of people. And I hear again and again, people want to have a choice when it comes to the interventions that they have, especially for their kids. People are trying to do what's best for their kids and they're trying to show up and, um, you know, be the best parent they can be. And I hear that argument and I get that. And that's why I think it's important if, for you guys to think seriously about how you can commit to creating environment where a choice is actually something that is feasible. Like what is the off-ramp? I mean, how do we get away from having these without introducing a high risk of having to go back to virtual? Or even open the door? I mean, maybe we don't even want to say it's a high risk. Maybe we just don't even want to open the door to virtual options. And so I just think while we're up here, Chris, Kendra, and I are representing the health perspective and that's one lens and it's one piece of the puzzle. But I do want to acknowledge that I do hear and I have heard the importance of choice. So, it just felt like I wanted to say that.
And we were not going to ask you to use that very dangerous word tonight. And just ask you for your very professional opinions and, and recommendations as you've seen them over the last two years. But thank you for offering that, Ms. Ordigo.
Yeah, I, I just want to ask a question that I hear, I just want to echo a question that I often hear in conversation, whether it's related specifically to school or just in general. It's, it's, it's difficult for, for me to fully understand. How does vaccination affect transmission? Because, because I, I understand the piece where vaccination protects the person who might become infected from becoming more severely ill, doesn't burden the hospital system, better survival rate. That makes sense. As we've learned more and more about the vaccines and increasing layer of boosters needed, which, which makes sense. It's sort of like a flu shot. How, how does me being vaccinated prevent me from transmitting that disease if I have been exposed to it?
So it doesn't necessarily prevent you from transmitting the virus. You get a vaccine to protect yourself so that if you come in contact with a virus, you don't get as ill. The Omicron variant right now is highly contagious and highly infectious, okay? So what we're finding is that people who have been vaccinated aren't getting as ill as those who have not. So it doesn't prevent them from getting it.
Right.
It just means they don't get nearly as sick as those who have not been vaccinated. It doesn't necessarily mean they don't, it prevents them from transmitting it either.
Okay. So I did understand that correctly. Because I, I feel like a lot of times the conversation is if you're not, you know, if you don't get vaccinated, that's irresponsible because yours, you could spread it more to others. But then we hear, well, everyone, vaccination doesn't actually prevent spread. And so there's, I just think it gets, people are confused and frustrated because they, they try and we try to hit different benchmarks and then the goalposts move and then it, it changes. And I just think there's a lot of mixed messaging and a lot of confusion. And I, I understood, to me, it makes sense that what you're saying about the, you know, if you get vaccinated and, and I actually would encourage people to get vaccinated, you know, it does prevent more severe illness. But we're also, we are hearing people say that you're less like, you know, it's going to make the pandemic over sooner or we can maybe take masks away if more people were vaccinated. I don't understand that piece. Because why, why would more people being vaccinated have anything to do with masks? It's the transmission rates the same.
Because I, in my mind, my, it depends on what your end goal is. So my personal end goal as an epidemiologist is to decrease any sort of severe disease. If I know that a population is highly vaccinated, then I know the likelihood of severe disease is really low. So that's my end game. Other people have different end games, right? So for me, if we take away masking and then there's a population of unvaccinated people, then a likelihood of severe disease is increased and we've got a bigger problem. We're going to have more, a higher burden of really sick people. And that's a bigger problem. And so that's why you go together for me, in my mind.
Yeah, there's also argument that there'll be more mutations. So the longer this virus is around and getting circulated, it's more likely it's going to mutate. So the thought is like, let's stop it in its tracks best we can to avoid mutations or else they'll keep coming.
And I think it's important to remember, this isn't a new strategy. I mean, we have so many vaccines our kids get before they go into kindergarten. I just got another email before going in seventh grade, we're getting some more vaccines. It is, vaccination is a strategy we've used for a long, long time to keep our kids in school. And so this isn't new. It's just a new one that we haven't used before. And, but the whole mechanism, getting your kids vaccinated before they go to public school is something most of us have dealt with as parents for a long time.
Sure.
I appreciate your willingness to answer these questions and these forms of questions, recognizing that we are in a school. We are, uh, members of the school board representing WJCC families, faculty, and staff. But you do have a greater audience than us and those that are in this room. And so your professional recommendations carry a lot of weight tonight for this community. So I think we all recognize that. And so with that, Ms. Ordigo's question and Ms. Cook's questions that are about our, our school business, but really are more about community and what we're dealing with, they, they do have value there. I don't mean to ask this question as a, uh, a slide or to be sarcastic, but, so forgive me if it seems that way, but I, I feel as if, my impression is, is that, um, we're avoiding the inevitable. Potentially avoiding the inevitable. And I would like you to comment on that. That comment really is a question. Are we avoiding the inevitable when folks may not want to be vaccinated? And in the community beyond our walls, folks will not want to wear their mask. Are we avoiding the inevitable? And is exposure really the, the end-all? And what we're going to be looking at when we look at true herd immunity? What's your, what's your take on that?
I mean, I think, I think it depends on, I think that is most likely what's going to happen with time. But if there's any way we can, can control the timing, it would be helpful. So back in the beginning, remember when everything shut down, a lot of that was to preserve beds in the hospital and ICU and ventilators because otherwise there wouldn't be enough. So we had to kind of shut things down to make sure that we had all those things available. Now we're at a different place. We have, everybody's on staff shortages everywhere, schools, health centers, everywhere you go, restaurants. So the time, that may be where we eventually go. But if we can have any control over it, it, this might, when there's staff shortages everywhere, this might just not be the best time to risk it. So I don't think we disagree with that. We see that coming for sure.
Thank you.
But that's why I like the dynamic masking and some of those ideas, yeah.
And I think what you're talking about is spot on in terms of thinking about how we're living with endemic COVID. I mean, we are moving in that direction and I am excited about moving in that direction. I'm going to be glad when this is just something we treat like a regular virus in our schools. It's just not where we are this week. And so I, I see that coming. I see that on the horizon as a state of being, of a way that we are. It's just right now with the surges, with the people that are out in the, in the school system, with the strain on the healthcare system, it, there's a lot happening right now to start thinking about getting rid of interventions.
Thank you. Dr. Harret?
If I could just ask a quick question. I know you've talked a little bit and I think it would be helpful for everyone to hear what exactly is happening in your clinics and in your roles right now in our community.
Well, I, I'm sure the parents listening can relate to my comment that it's very difficult for a parent with a sick child to find an appointment right now. I'm sure it's extremely frustrating. They're probably calling us at eight in the morning and not hearing back till four. Then we get, they finally get a call back and then our staff's telling them to go to urgent care and then urgent cares are full for the next five days. That's what we're seeing every day. And so our parents, our children are not able to get in. Our offices are full from the minute we open in the morning. Everybody needs testing and our staff's starting to either burn out or get sick and we're short-staffed, which doesn't help. So it's a difficult time.
I would echo that. We're at Old Town Medical Center and we see children and adults and we are full every day. We have walk-in services where we offer testing and people are calling the minute the doors open. Um, and there's just not enough capacity. We also are short-staffed and have staff members who are out sick or who have sick children. In the month of December, I think we had maybe 14 positives. And we are now in week three of January and I've had 27 positives. And we performed probably 14 tests today that we haven't gotten results back for. So we're seeing a major surge right now in positive COVID cases. Um, and we're all just trying to maintain and still provide services to our community.
Yeah, and flu is circulating and RSV is circulating and croup and all kinds of other things. It's winter. It's a bad time of year.
And I'm seeing, from my perspective, I don't see patients directly, but I'm involved in the more population level side of it. I'm also a teacher. So on the population level side, contact tracing is tough. It's, it's happening marginally, sometimes better than others. Teaching is challenging. It is hard. And so I'm trying to build and rebuild and rebuild again my class so that I can deal with six people being out one day and another four the next and then a different three the following day and then catch up all those people on different times in between, on nights and weekends, and then retest and change deadlines and regrade. And that's hard. I mean, it's hard to deliver high-quality education when you are shifting and moving around all the pieces and parts consistently. It's exhausting. It's not month two, it's year two. And we've been doing this for a while, so we have learned some things and we are able to build on it. But it's not the way that I'd like to teach. I mean, I want to teach consistently with deadlines and things due and everybody on the same page, learning together in a way that's, you know, is a learning community instead of in pieces and parts and, you know, half-measures.
I appreciate your work, your professionalism, and all of our healthcare workers that are out there providing for the public good in a, in a continually difficult time. Ms. Robinson, I want to ask you, as you're seeing cases and, and seeing positivity in, where was that? Old Town Medical, was that right? Old Town Medical? Are, are you able or any of our panelists able to differentiate between the different variants? No, not able to differentiate? No, okay. So my secondary question, which probably can't be answered then, is are we seeing more Omicron than Delta than the original? Is there less of the original then? And if that's the case, are we going to see, you know, a widespread reduction in the severity of, of the virus? But I guess we can't answer that.
I can kind of say, so usually what they do is they have a couple of select offices where they'll kind of partner with you, the Department of Health, and ask you to send samples. And so, you know, we're not chosen sites, but there are sites in, in the state of Virginia where the doctors are swabbing and then they're taking those specimens and able to say what variant it is. And so in a very short period of three to four weeks, it went from 90% Delta, 10% Omicron to a total flip. And I think it's actually now 97% Omicron and 3% Delta.
Thank you. Any other questions from board members? Okay. Did you have any other comments? Our, our medical advisory team, any other comments?
Appreciate what you all do too.
Thank you for taking the time tonight. I really do appreciate your, your expertise. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We, yeah, we're grateful for their willingness to serve. I, I did want to share briefly some of the operational scenarios that we're facing as a school division. There was a reference by Dr. Dolan to how things were going internally. And so I think it's, it's right for us to share some of that information with you. So Daniel, I'm going to shift to that other slide deck if I could, please. By way of remembering, on August the 3rd, we provided the board with a brief in terms of our planning focus and the planning principles for the school year 21-22. And we laid out four very specific focal points. In-person learning, health, safety, and welfare of students and staff, focus on student achievement, relationship building, and additional supports. That has been our driver since we first talked with the board in August and that maintains the posture for the school division. We also shared that there were some very specific action steps that we were taking as a school division in August of 2021. We wanted to continue to promote vaccination. We were going to start with a mask requirement for all K-12 as the school year begins. The date for me is particularly important. We shared that information with this body and had made a determination as a division on August the 3rd that we were going to start the year in the masking realm. We were going to follow the masking requirement on all WJCC transportation, which was handed forth by the federal government. We're going to continue to look at community and school transmission. We were going to encourage folks to stay home when they were sick. We've talked about hand washing, cleaning protocols, and contact tracing. Dr. Dolan and, and team mentioned community transmission. This community transmission slide is one that we've shared with the board over the course of the last six months. It will come as no surprise to know that the Commonwealth of Virginia is right now in the high transmission rate. Uh, I have circled Williamsburg, James City County in blue to help really illuminate where we are. I wanted to share that in December, when we were in front of the board, we, we were talking about for James City County, 122 cases relative to community transmission. The number that was reported out today on the CDC website was 1,865. So in December, we talked about 122 and today we're talking about 1,865. The seven-day increase in terms of percentage rate for cases is about 92%. It's a 92% increase over the last seven days for cases in James City County with a percent positivity in the 27% range. Again, when we were in December, we talked about 18 cases in Williamsburg during that reporting range. That number is up nearly 50 as of today's reporting data. Across the bottom of the slide, I just wanted to remind you what the four different designations were in terms of community transition. It goes from the, the right-hand side, which is full red, high transmission, to substantial, to moderate, to low. And so blue would be the lowest level. We've continued to highlight the vaccination rates of our community, specifically our students. I shared just a minute ago with Ms. Hummel that for five to 11, we're at 21.2% and 12 to 17, 43.9%. Taken in total for five to 17, it is 32.3% in terms of our vaccination rate as a community, Williamsburg, James City County. We've talked specifically about the school-level impact and have tried to keep our community informed in terms of the number of cases and positive cases for students that are in isolation and positive cases of when there is a quarantine scenario. The numbers reported on our website today, right now, are not entirely accurate because from about 10 o'clock this morning through 4:00 PM this afternoon, we saw an additional 16 staff cases and an additional 73 student cases. That's in terms of positive and subsequent isolation for students. Wanted to share information around students being quarantined during the course of this school year. So 3,517 students were quarantined, have been quarantined. And this is as of Friday's data because it's, it's changing pretty quickly these days. Of that, 65% or, you know, just, just under 2,300 were quarantined related to a school-related close contact. The, the math there would tell you that 35% are being quarantined out of an outside contact. We have been able to go back and look very specifically at the data in terms of, once you're quarantined, does that eventually turn into a positive case? We have been able to go back and look very specifically at the data in terms of, once you're quarantined, does that eventually turn into a positive case? 72 is the number that we have as of Friday, which is about 2%. The next couple pieces of information are really where you can see the strain in terms of the operations relative to the school division. For school year 21-22, there have been 1,483 positive cases. It's folks that have tested positive for COVID. 193 staff and nearly 1,300 students. More alarming, quite frankly, is that from 1-3 to 1-14, so the two weeks post our holiday break, there were 894 of those 1,483 cases. So in total, about 60% of our cases of positivity have resulted in the last two weeks. 66% for staff.
If I can ask a question before we move on.
Sure, absolutely.
Back up to the 2%, 2.05, the 72 isolations tracked to schools is probably not, but is that inclusive of the 73 that you mentioned today?
No, sure. All of the data that I'm trying to share with you is as of Friday. I did want you to know that the case total right now on our website is not fully accurate based on the things that came in this afternoon.
Thank you.
We attempt to update it twice a day. Some days it's just once.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So what are some of the specific operational impacts? One of the pieces that we track and have gone back and looked at is the monthly sub-fill rates for job categories. So that first table presents to you what the various sub-fill rates look like in 2018, 2019 and now for 2021. So for instance, in October of 2018, our sub-fill rate was at approximately 88%. That meant that if a job was put into our SubFinder system, 88% of the time during that month it was filled. Hopefully that makes sense. That number was 86% in 2019. That number is in the 46% range in 2021. We have approximately the same number of staff absences. The challenge is that we don't have the substitute pool or the substitute staff in order to fill those roles that become open. We are down at 47% for the month of December and early indicators are we are at about 30% so far for the month of January. So 30% of the time, we're able to fill classrooms with substitutes. So what have we done to try to mitigate that and try to make sure that we've been able to provide in-person learning? Since November 1st, central office staff has filled in 140 school sub-requests. That could include time in the cafeteria. That could include time in an English classroom. It could include working with a self-contained class. But we have done that 140 times since November 1st. 46 of that 140, nearly 30% have come within the last two weeks. Additionally, on the operation front, last week alone, in the operations department, we were down 10 bus drivers relative to COVID positivity. There were multiple bus aides and in essence, the entire mechanics shop was out with COVID. What does that do in terms of our ability to provide on-time service to school? Well, we can't. And to be blatantly honest, we cannot provide on-time service. Drivers are doubling back. You're doubling up runs. We've added a fourth run for some drivers that have three. There are members of our office staff in transportation who have CDLs, who stopped answering the phones and started driving buses. So it has been an all-hands-on-deck approach to try to maintain daily in-person learning. We are at a very tenuous point and I wanted the board to be aware of that and to share that information with you. What questions could I answer?
Any questions from the board? Ms. Ordigo?
Thank you for your presentation. And I just want to acknowledge that I do understand that this has been a very, very difficult and increasingly difficult time to try to keep schools open and operate and all the various functions of schools and health facilities. Everyone is very burdened and many other industries as well. And I appreciate that and I just want to acknowledge that first off. And I think that I know that everyone in the school leadership and all of our teachers are doing everything they can and have the best interest of kids and the community at heart. I want to go back to slide seven real quick because this is actually, I really am happy to see this number. This is a question that I've had just personally, just out of curiosity.
Which one is that, Ms. Ordigo?
The number of, I hadn't said it yet, but the isolations turned into positive cases. Am I to understand that in school year 21-22 thus far, there have been 3,517 quarantined children?
That is correct. As it relates to close contacts, that is correct.
And of those 3,517, 72 ended up, of the quarantined kids ended up positive?
That is correct.
So that means that about a little over 3,400 kids were quarantined and did not get COVID?
That is also correct. Of that, of that 35-17?
Right.
Right.
Is that, I'm trying to put it in context because I really, I really don't know. So I'm not suggesting that this is bad or good or indifferent. Is that a high rate in your opinion?
We think that's a low rate and what we think is that that means that there is not a high rate of transmission within school.
Is that, that would be my next question. How do we know it's not within school?
Well, so. With 3,500 that have been close quarantined based on school, I mean, based on the school, excuse me, 2294 are related to school. So our sense is that the layered prevention strategies that are being utilized are having an impact. Thereby putting us at about 2% transmission rate ultimately, and that transmission rate being if you were designated as a close contact and had to quarantine, you subsequently came down with COVID.
Are we over, could that also suggest that we're over-quarantining people and maybe even over-quarantining staff? And could that be contributing to the burden? And I don't, I'm not suggesting that that's anyone's fault. I'm just asking, is that possible?
I think that would, you might be able to make that case. I think what we have looked at relative to quarantine status and making the close contact designation is to what degree are we able to quantify the three to six feet? To what degree are we able to ensure that folks are wearing masks appropriately? And so the close contact designation, honestly, is not an exact science. It is an opportunity to look at seating charts. It is an opportunity to look at interactions with, to make a determination about who is and who is not a close contact. And when there was an adjustment by the CDC and VDH to potentially shorten that period of time, we made that adjustment as well.
Right. Yeah.
Ms. Kip, did I see you had a comment or question?
Sure. I didn't signal so, but I always do. So I'd be delighted to take my turn. Just following up on what Ms. Ordigo was asking about quarantining and our protocols. I just want to affirm that when we did quarantine, we did so in concert with VDH and CDC guidelines. Right. Okay, so if there was, I mean, there's no magic wand. I think the whole point of quarantine is sometimes you're over-quarantining, right?
I wasn't suggesting that, you know, that Mr. Keever made up the quarantine time.
No, I'm just, yeah, but I think by definition, that's sometimes a byproduct. But kind of, can you give us an update on the Test to Stay program? Is that, is there anything available on that or is that still very much in the VDH, I mean, in the DOE hands and you'll tell us?
Sure, let me, I can talk about both Vista and Test to Stay. We've mentioned to the board before that we are part of the Vista testing program, which means on a bi-weekly basis, we are doing screening testing at each of our schools. We have tested well, nearly 1,200 students and staff through the Vista program. In addition, on the testing front, I think we've distributed somewhere in the neighborhood of 1,800 home test kits to be able to utilize to help make a determination about if someone's ill or not ill, what have you. The Test to Stay program is one that has just come forward from VDOE and VDH. We were afforded an opportunity to bring three schools into the mix for that. Met with those three schools on Friday, so I'm pleased to say that we're beginning the process at Lafayette and Berkeley and Laurel Lane to utilize the Test to Stay protocol to hopefully limit the amount of class time that students miss if they are able to and willing to participate in daily testing had they been designated a close contact. So we'll be starting slowly with those three schools, but our fervent hope is that at some point next week or at latest, the beginning of the second semester, is we would start Test to Stay.
Thank you. Yeah, my daughter participates in the Vista program and finds it, we find it very comforting to be tested regularly and appreciate that. So can you give us, again, back to my comment earlier, which is my major focus is on keeping kids in school and doing, employing whatever mitigation strategies that realize that. So can you give us kind of a picture of what that looks like when it breaks down, when it's not working because of what's going on in the community perhaps? So I know we've got some classes that are shut down. Can you talk about, you know, maybe the Bright Beginnings program or sort of what that looks like? Can you just kind of paint a picture for us what it looks like when things aren't working and when you do have to push the pause button?
Let me, let me talk about the things that we have been able to do. And so there have probably been a few times in the last three or four weeks where I felt like we'd reached tipping points with particular grade levels or in particular buildings. And you probably are aware that there are other divisions around the area that are putting schools on virtual for a period of time. We have done our darndest to ensure that doesn't happen. And if that means central office staff covering classes, if that means repositioning students in other classes and having teachers teach throughout the day and rotating folks in, we've attempted to do that. The challenge around Bright Beginnings often is that many of those students are unmasked, that many of those students are likely designated as close contacts. And that's oftentimes why a Bright Beginnings classroom would need to be in quarantine as a close contact for a period of time. More often than not, we have not designated a full class for quarantine. It has not been without the building staff just doing yeoman's work in order to ensure that students can come to school every day.
So a lot of our kids are medically fragile, particularly in the Bright Beginnings program, but throughout the division. Does that have an impact on your work in terms of trying to mitigate against spread?
Yes. I think that there are any number of challenges that it really becomes individual students, individual buildings looking at what are the specific prevention strategies that we need to utilize and really ensure that we're putting in place.
Right. Thank you.
Any other, thank you, Ms. Young.
Hi. Thank you, Mr. Keever. During this pandemic, we know that COVID probably is our main focus, but do we have any attendance percentages of students that have been absent from school that are not due to COVID, flu, for example, or other illnesses that children are prone to get?
I can tell you, over the last several weeks, we've been in the mid-eighties in terms of student attendance. So approximately 17 or 18% of our student body has been out of school, whether it be for a COVID designation, whether it be for an excused absence, whether it be for some other type of illness. That number is significantly lower than we would experience in a normal year, not unlike our sub-fill rates.
Do you have a reason for that?
Well, Ms. Young, that with the number of cases that have occurred since winter break, just, we're in the hundreds range. And so that's part of it. We also have a number of students that have had to quarantine relative to being a close contact. And beyond that, students get ill with things other than COVID.
Right.
As an example, in the operations front, we're missing 10 drivers because of COVID, but there are other drivers who are out sick with other illnesses that also have an impact.
Right. And I just say that I am astonished that, hell, you've been managing to get everything going. I am, it was just a point that other people are getting sick. It's not all from COVID. So, thank you.
I just have one question. How are we doing if we're short-staffed even letting teachers know about the contact tracing? Are we having, like, the people that let you know about it, if they're not there, how are we getting the message to teachers that may have been in contact if we're short-staffed?
People are working lots of hours, Ms. Hunley. And I believe that we are communicating to the very best extent possible to let folks know that you may have been exposed to a student. I'll give you a tangential example. We had a member of the central office team who was out in a building on Friday substituting and was alerted by a staff member with whom this person was working over the weekend. Got a call that said, hey, you are subbing in this classroom. The student has thrown up. The student is COVID-positive. I just wanted you to be aware that you may have been exposed. So I think that the professionals in our building are looking after one another and sharing that information if we're not able to have a nurse do it or a contact assessor can't do it.
It's like every other piece of our operations right now. It's stretched to the max. And, you know, we all said at the beginning of this year, our goal was to keep students in school. And that was certainly my promise to the community that we do everything we could to keep that in place. And I know I can't thank enough Mr. Keever and his staff and the nurses and our teachers and principals and central office staff and transportation. Every single piece of the puzzle is working 100%, 110% and more. And we're really at that breaking point.
It doesn't need to be a thankless job. So I do want to say thank you. And I know that there are many in this room that would echo that. Thank you for your diligence and your professionalism and your willingness to have breakfast with your daughter on her birthday. Happy birthday. And then come and spend a long night with us. So thank you.
Some things we don't share in public, Mr. Dowd.
Well, I'll apologize, but thank you. I do want to take us back for a moment to several meetings last year. And we saw some incredible moments of transparency on the part of Dr. Herron and your staff when that board at that time asked for updates, learning updates. What was virtual learning achieving or not achieving? And when we got those updates, we saw that virtual learning was failing our students and failing our families, though it was the best that we had at the time for a time. But we really had to dig deep, and you guys have dug deep, to make, dug incredibly deep to make in-person learning an option viable for so many of our students. So I wouldn't ask if we can see that same level of transparency in due time, of course, not tonight. But I would be interested to know, as we've returned back to in-person five days, and you guys have done all that work that you have, but also recognizing that we've leaned heavily on subs and subs have needed subs, what the ramifications of that have been on learning this year. I think I would like to see that. Any other questions or comments from the board for Mr. Keever? Thank you, Mr. Keever.
Thank you, Mr. Dow. Thank you.
Dr. Herron, I think you have some comments and then I'll follow you.
Absolutely. I just wanted to reiterate, thanks to everyone for all we're doing to keep students in school today. You know, throughout the pandemic, as you've heard tonight, we've had very clear health and safety protocols. And we have implemented them to the nth degree perfectly in some ways and imperfectly in others. But we have taken the layers of mitigation. We've kept them in place throughout the pandemic and they remain today. And one of my greatest concerns right now is where we are right now with the executive order two and the fact it's not the timing of that order and the need to continue to keep all of our layered mitigation strategies in place so that we can keep students in school. And I know that's an issue that Mr. Dow is going to speak to tonight as well and where we are in that. But we've got to, in my mind as superintendent, my first priority will remain the education of our students and creating a healthy environment to make that happen. And I believe we've got to keep everything in place. And I believe we've got to keep everything in place to make that happen. And continue with everything we've done to the nth degree, masks and everything through the peak of the pandemic. We do need to change and we need to have an off ramp, and I agree with everything that's been said tonight. And we were already talking about it and trying to work through the data we would use to get there because we also believe that students do better and adults do better teaching without masks. And students need to be seen, we believe all of that, we recognize that's very, very difficult, but we also recognize that that is one of the key mitigation strategies that's keeping us in school. And so I know Mr. Dowd is going to talk a little bit about the process and that and where we are in that, but from our superintendent's perspective, that is where I sit right now, that we really, really need to keep everything in place for the safety of our students, the safety of our teachers, to keep us in-person learning. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Heron, and on everything you've shared, I agree with. And you carry a heavy burden that this board and this community lays on your shoulders to care and protect for some thirteen thousand individuals, students, faculty and staff. And so that's not lost on anyone up here and anyone in this room. We did commit and we held a high expectation for you and for your team to ensure five days of learning, in-person learning this year. And you guys have done that incredibly well under extreme conditions. And while that's the case, while that's been our priority, we do have an executive order number two by a new governor. We had executive orders by a previous governor, Governor Northam, those were viewed as law. And there are points of contention, was it law absent of a emergency order or did the emergency order, what did it negate that? Was it law on its own, those orders? Despite that, I believe we adhere to the law. From my part, while I greatly appreciate the recommendation that you bring and we need your recommendation, we value it, there is not enough yet for this board to move on that recommendation. I've asked that we, our board, meet on Friday for a special meeting where we will take all of the relevant information, seeing that there is new information that's coming out even now in the state of Virginia that shines light on the relationship between E O two and S B thirteen oh three, and that will help us understand where our line is. So I took an oath to uphold the constitution and the laws of the state of Virginia, as did everybody else up here, including our superintendent. And I know our superintendent wants to do that, she's communicated that with me. She's looking for our leadership on Friday, and I'm thankful that we do have a few more days to see how these things shake out in our communities, in our state, so that we can know what side of right this is. And I believe that this board will be diligent to watch and measure the outcome of things. We'll have our attorney with us, I believe, and we're going to begin either at five thirty or six. There will not be public comment at that time. I'm grateful that you all are here. I believe we're going to have a majority of you speak tonight, and we'll have a healthy round of comment that we take with us tonight into the evening and until Friday, recognizing that your voices and your perceptions of the situation do matter and we take it to heart. So we will be meeting on Friday, either five thirty or six, and that'll be posted. And our attorney will be here and will be able to ask her questions, and she'll, I believe, be prepared to share some of the dissenting arguments on behalf of other colleagues of hers, as she had shared with me, that she is not in a vacuum in these conversations, the interpretation of E O two and the relationship with S B thirteen oh three. And so we're going to be able to talk with her and ask her questions and formulate our understanding on that relationship and then make a decision on the superintendent's recommendation to move forward on the twenty-fourth. Are there any questions on process from my board on that? Okay, okay, all right. Let us move then to item seven point zero one, announcements and superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My report this evening begins with our sixth annual high school science fair, hosted at Lafayette High School on Wednesday, January the twelfth. Students' projects fell into one of the following categories: chemistry, earth and environmental sciences, material sciences, physics and astronomy, plant sciences, and robotics and intelligent machines. The student scientists from all three high schools presented their research to a cadre of volunteer judges from partner organizations. We extend our thanks to the judges who provided their time to support our students. Congratulations to Jamestown freshman Jen Yentei for her first-place project, effect of plants on SARS-CoV-2, and Jamestown senior Caroline Yu for her runner-up project, bad hair day. Last week, we celebrated Principal Appreciation Week across Virginia. The men and women who are leading our schools are absolutely incredible. They have shown tireless devotion to our students, staff, families and community. They lead with integrity and relying upon their instructional expertise. They are constantly improving the educational and social lives of our students. Our principals are an integral reason, we see growth in achievement in our classrooms, our schools and our division, and why our students are so well poised for success in their future endeavors. I deeply appreciate all that our principals do and recognize them especially for their leadership over the last two years. I know you'll join me in thanking them for all they've done, are doing and continue to do for our students. Finally, this evening, I want to welcome Cara Wall, our new strategic communications officer. Cara, if you would stand just for a moment and let everyone see you. Ms. Wall brings lots of expertise from the great state of Illinois and with over eight years of experience in division leadership and communications, and we're delighted to have her with us. In fact, her very first weekend before she started, she was helping us announce snow days. So she's well into the process already and a wonderful member of the team, and we welcome you this evening. Mr. Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Are there reports from the board, announcements or reports? All right. Here.
Well, I wanted to say, we had our first CAC meeting, and we are excited, we had a full group and looking forward to the things they're putting forth and the goals. And then also, I enjoyed the ACOS presentation, it was virtual, but to see our high school students doing amazing things and just hearing those GPAs just blew my mind anyway. And just to see that in spite of it all, we do have children that are really excelling, and so I enjoyed that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Okay, all right, we're going to move on to public comment, item eight point zero one, Ms. Hummel.
First of all, I just wanted to announce we have thirty-one speaker cards. And before I read the instructions, I'm just going to let you know that I'm going to announce two names at a time so that the first person I announce will come up, but the second person I announce will know that they are the next one to speak. So what I'm going to do now is just give the instructions for the public speakers. At this point in our meeting, where citizens are invited to address the board, those citizens desiring to speak have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. The speakers are asked to come to the podium where their names are called, state their names for the record and direct their comments to the chair of the board. It is the board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected. Hence, the citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Although the board does not respond to your comments at this time, your comments are heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated one minute and thirty seconds to make their presentation, and the board asks that you respect this time limitation and also be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Mr. Chair, and my directions are concluded.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Okay, the first two people are Sarah Webb and then Christine Payne. So Sarah Webb.
My name is Sarah Webb. I'm here as a staff member to urge you to keep the mask mandate. I have always wanted to be a teacher, but this year has made me question if I am in the right place. I have never seen my fellow educators this stressed and unhappy. I hear more and more teachers threatening to leave. I speak for myself and others when I say that we are absolutely exhausted and cannot take anything else on our plate. My students wear masks for seven hours a day without any complaints. They are reminded, they remind their fellow students to keep them above their nose and where they should be. My students also tell me how scared they are to get sick of COVID, and they have seen their classmates get sick and miss schools for weeks. With the mask mandate being removed potentially on January twenty-fourth, I know that myself and others will feel even more unsafe than we already do. Despite the comments and beliefs of many members of the community, COVID is real and still affecting all of us. The CDC and V D H have issued guidelines for the reason. Since returning from winter break, as we've heard, despite her best efforts to remain healthy, educators at my school are getting sick and for various reasons, not just COVID, but, and there's a shortage of substitutes, COVID tests are not available in town or at school. When masks are no longer required, how are schools going to stay open? How are we going to stay afloat? I fear for my own mental and physical well-being when there is a lack of support. I'm almost done. It is your job as a support to protect us. Thank you.
If you want to leave your comments, if you've talked to them, thank you.
We have Christine Payne, followed by Andrew Kason.
Good evening. I'll talk fast. I was the nurse coordinator for the visitor centers vaccine clinic from February to July. We initiated twenty-two thousand eight hundred and forty vaccines, and the Williamsburg-James City County school nurses were a vital part of that effort. With schools fully open now, they are on the front lines of this pandemic, they are exhausted and they need your help. The school health advisory committee has already outlined what we need to do, that's in concert with CDC recommendations for public school recommendations. Each part of the transmission mitigation efforts are vital, they are layered, as they were explained. Students want to be in school, we want our students to be in school. It's best for their health, for their socio and emotional development. It is a lifeline for children who are food insecure, and it is also essential for parents in the workforce. We cannot remove one piece of the mitigation toolbox because if we do, we can guarantee that we will not be able to continue in-person instruction without interruption. I strongly recommend maintaining the mask mandate. I work with Kendra Robinson at Old Town Medical and Dental, I see both adults and children, and I can tell you that COVID is rampant in our community. This is not the time to let up. It's not easy to wear a mask, not even for nurses. For the school board members, I urge you to continue mask mandates.
Ms. Payne, thank you so much.
Listen to your teachers, and please, for the parents in the room tonight, please be kind to each other and just model good mask behavior. Thank you.
Andrew Kason, followed by Casey Bailey.
Hello, distinguished board members. I'm a teacher and a parent, and I am also out here to speak on behalf of maintaining the mask mandates. I didn't really have too much prepared, so I'm just going to give you my speech in kind of a word-on-the-street kind of format. I've been teaching a lot, speaking a lot with my colleagues, and I've seen and heard a lot of things, and I just wanted to present that to you. First of all, I want to direct your attention to Mrs. Davis's email that should be in your inbox. She's a ten-year sub at our district, and she's at her wit's end and would probably quit subbing if the mask mandate was lifted. Again, you saw the numbers just before, how absolutely vital our subs are right now. For my fellow colleagues in my building, they're sick and tired of being political footballs. They just want to teach. I want to just teach, and taking away another mitigation would be detrimental. More students would be out, and I can tell you this, juggling a classroom and zooming at the same time, it's, and you don't even know what day you're going to be zooming or not, or how many students are going to be on Zoom or not. It's just ridiculous. So we really would appreciate if the masks remain on and to stop the further transmission so kids can be in school. We also, on top of all this achievement gap, on top of the mislearning for the last two years, how are we supposed to teach like this? Also, what was brought up multiple times was the example of Chesapeake schools when they had to redo the mask mandates because of all the.
Thank you, Mr. Kason. Thank you, Mr. Kason.
Casey Bailey, followed by Thorn Thomas.
My name is Casey Bailey, and I'm here as a twenty-year teacher veteran, a mom of two James River students and a concerned community member to implore you to uphold the mask requirement. Currently, COVID cases are at an all-time high, and our schools are already overwhelmed and understaffed, trying to cover unfilled staff vacancies, providing instruction to those in class and at home simultaneously, and managing the never-ending requirements of an educator in a global pandemic. The CDC's latest recommendations and mitigation strategies include a return to school after only five days of illness. They rely specifically and almost entirely on the wearing of a well-fitting mask for an additional five days. If parents opt out of masking, will that isolation period return to ten days? Will those students then feel they can opt out of listening to directions or completing assignments or homework? When schools set policy but parents choose not to follow them, we are setting a very dangerous precedent. For our youngest students, who will manage the enforcing of who wears masks and who doesn't? Who will explain to them why one member of the classroom community does not need to mask while others should? Yes, rhetorical questions, it will all fall to the stretched, beyond thin, exhausted, overworked, underpaid teachers. I am blessed to feel supported and empowered by my admin at Stonehouse, but in twenty years, I have never felt less valued by society. Forty-eight percent of teachers considered quitting in the last thirty days, and thirty-four percent are seriously contemplating leaving their profession altogether. Now is not the time to send the message to our teachers that their health and well-being of their families is not a top priority.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey.
Thorn Thomas, followed by Ashlyn Gitton, sorry if I got that wrong. Ashley Gitkos, sorry. So Thorn Thomas.
I was hoping I had more than a minute and thirty, but I do have something to hand everybody afterwards. It's straight from the CDC.
Yeah, if you'll give that to the clerk. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay, so a quick history here, flu virus has been here for a hundred years, eighty years we've had vaccines, we still have the flu, it's not going away. Respiratory illnesses are not going to go away. The vaccine is not going to cure all, so let's state that first. In two thousand fourteen and fifteen, there were fifty-one thousand reported deaths by the flu, but they didn't have the testing guidelines that they have now for COVID. So what would that number have been if they had the COVID testing? It would be in the hundreds of thousands. Why weren't we worried about the flu? Suddenly we're worried about the COVID? And I got some documentation about that, but let's talk about the crux of this. The law thirteen oh three states, keep schools open, you got to follow the guidance to the best of your ability of the CDC. Well, the CDC does not mandate anything. They give recommendations, as many of you have already stated, and many of them have stated. A recommendation is this stat, a recommendation, it's not a mandate. You do not, this body does not have the ability, the enforcement, to create mandates. You are to follow the CDC's recommendation. So recommend, put posters on the walls, tell the parents, send literature home, all the kids, kids will wear masks, parents will have kids wear masks, it's not like suddenly everybody's not going to wear a mask. But this board does not have the right to do that. The executive order is what stops you from doing that. You are not allowed to make a mandate. The first governor, the last governor, had a mandate, we followed it, everybody followed it. The new governor, who was elected by the people, has said no mandates.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas.
You can make recommendations.
If you'll give your notes to the clerk. Thank you, sir.
Ashley Gitkos, followed by Max Blaylock.
Hi, my name is Ashley Jikis. I am a parent of two elementary school kids in James City County schools. I want to thank you for your work. I want to thank you for your work on keeping our children safe, healthy, and in schools. I know it's a tough task right now. Thank you for doing that. I want to bring up that rules regarding quarantining, at least at my children's elementary school, have eased up as the school year has gone on. In the beginning of the school year, there was contact tracing. If you were within a certain distance of someone and that person tested positive, your close contacts would have to quarantine as well. I have close friends whose children have tested positive for COVID since returning from Christmas break, and their own siblings have been told by the school nurse, if you do not come to school because you've tested negative and you're asymptomatic, if you do not come to school, that will be an unexcused absence. I understand that the layers of mitigation, the masking, all of the layers from the presentation earlier, help to prevent those situations with spread. So what happens if masking is dropped? If suddenly we remove one of those layers and you have a sibling or a person whose parent has tested positive in their home, will they now have to quarantine now that that additional layer of protection is gone? I also visited the CDC website before this meeting. I saw that in 2018 and 2019, there were 28,000 flu deaths. In '17 and '18, there were 52,000, bringing to a total 80,000 total flu deaths for two years versus 850,000 COVID deaths in two years.
Thank you, Ms. Gitcos.
They're not the same. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Max Blalock, followed by Bruce Renaud.
Good evening. Max Blalock. Well, I'm a parent of two children in WJCC schools and a United Methodist pastor, and with only a minute and a half, it's encouraging to me as a pastor that other people have already run over. So I just wanted to put that out there. But I'd like to thank you all for the work that you've been doing and for the work that the staff and the students in Lafayette and Berkeley and Laurel Lane, because my children have been in all three during this pandemic, have been doing to safeguard children, and not just children, but students and faculty and staff. And in my Christian tradition and in the Judaic tradition too, one of the fundamental commandments is to love your neighbor as yourself. And that commandment is not just about loving your neighbor as yourself, but particularly those people who are most vulnerable. And I think one of the things that hasn't been brought up in our conversation is those students and staff that are in our schools. We have, I was going to, over 1,900 students in special ed. I'm sure many of those probably have trouble masking or might be immunocompromised among other students and faculty and staff. And if we remove the mask mandate, how, what kind of danger are we putting those folks in? When we're called to love our neighbors ourselves, we're particularly called to look at the most vulnerable and how our decisions will affect them. So for me as a parent, and for me as a pastor, and for me as a person, I want to continue to be proud of our community, proud of our school system. So please keep the mask mandate. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pastor Blalock.
Bruce Renaud, followed by Anne Marie Smith.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Renaud, and I'm a father of two and a grandfather of nine. So kids really mean a lot to me. As you all know, everything in this world is given to us as just stuff. The only thing that we leave behind is our children of any value. The problem I have is with the terms mandate and their evil twin edict. I've traveled the world, and I've seen what those effect, those have on other societies. You do not lose your freedom all at once. You lose it bit by bit by bit by bit. And I don't think mandates or edicts have any place in our society. Parents are empowered by God to take care of their children and look after them. They make good decisions. I can prove that just by one thing. You should have it in your mind, the picture of that Afghani parent handing their child to a US Marine at Kabul Airport as they were evacuating. You wanted that child to have a better life. So I have to say, thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Renaud.
Marie Smith, followed by Lindsay Taylor.
Good evening. Seems apparent, nothing presented tonight really validates that masks, vaccines, or quarantines are working. Nothing. Things are the same, or even they stated things are worse. So nothing is really mitigating it. They're not answers. For Friday, I'd ask if you have asked if Senator Donovan or Peterson, who SB 1303, whether they were the ones who sponsored it, whether they were willing to either come or make a statement. I would encourage you to reach out to them. Back to the experts from tonight, it's clear that the choice should be returned to parents. They simply are guessing what to do. If we're at the same place we are a year ago, then the mitigation measures are not validated. You said yourself, they keep changing the measures, so why should we believe that what we're being presented today would work any better? Feelings are not facts. I did not see actual facts. I did tonight, I saw one study that was from a year ago. That's it, answering what I think is not a fact. Dr. Dolan has no idea if higher vaccination rates will eliminate COVID. It isn't, it isn't eliminating it in Israel, and she should be using studies and facts, not feelings. And stop threatening to keep our kids out of school just because they would be unmasked. I'm tired of hearing those threats. That is not fair. It's a scare tactic. I would recommend that parents read a book called Dissolving Illusions by Suzanne Humphries, where repeating this cycle over and over and over again with the vaccine recommendations. The easiest thing we can do to stop this is just to stop it. Stop all these measures. We're having entire meetings after meetings after meetings about COVID. Let's get back to teaching. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Smith.
Lindsay Taylor, followed by Alan Param.
Hello. My name is Lindsay Taylor. I am the vice president of the WJCEA, and I am a teacher at James River Elementary School. So I first wanted to say that we, the WJCEA, put out a quick survey the other day about masks, and 88% of our responders support keeping the mask mandate. And so the WJCEA would strongly recommend that we do what we can to keep the mask mandate. I had a lot more written down, but I listened a lot tonight to what was said, especially by the health advisory team, and then what you said, Mr. Dowell. And so I think what I want to ask you to look at is the operational piece, what this looks like in the schools, starting on Monday, the day after that we've just been told will be the peak of Omicron. And if what we have just seen and what we have just been through in the last two weeks is not the peak, then I'm not sure we are going to be able to get through that in our schools. So between now and Friday, I ask all of you to please spend a day in a school. A full day. Don't visit for a half hour and pick and choose the classrooms you see. Spend tomorrow or Thursday inside a school and see what we are doing. I spend the first 20 minutes of my day every day deciding who's covering what, who's going where, whether I'm teaching PE, library, or computer today, or all three. So please, I ask you, before you make any decisions on Friday, go visit our schools, talk to those teachers, talk to the admin, talk to our staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor.
Glenn Param, followed by Joan Slakovitz.
Good evening, Chairman Dowell, esteemed members of the board, and Dr. Heron. My name is Alen Parm, president of the Williamsburg-James City Education Association. WJCEA supports the continued use of masks in WJCC schools, and we encourage our division and school leaders to continue following CDC guidelines and advice from our health advisory board here. Please keep in mind how your decisions will affect the work environment for our teachers, bus drivers, cafeteria workers, parent professionals, teacher aides, school counselors, school nurses, and substitutes in WJCC. Furthermore, I would like to give my thanks to all of our educator supporters who have joined us here tonight and online, wearing red for Ed to support our educators speaking here today. Furthermore, before I leave, I implore WJCC to be bolder and their salary increase not just for 7%, but for 10%. To be seen competitive with our neighboring divisions, we need to be bolder to obtain not just our current educators, but to attract newer ones. Thank you for your time tonight. Have a good day.
Thank you, Ms. Parm.
Joan Slakovitz, followed by Jason Besner. Joan, did I, did I spell, did I pronounce that wrong?
Slakovitz.
Is it Joan, though? Joan?
John.
John.
A-N-H-N.
I'm so sorry. Sorry, John.
So I'm John Slakovitz. I've spoken here before in this board. It seems there's been odds with, at odds with the community, and I've been trying to figure out where the disconnect is. I've racked my brain as to how educated adults can be so far apart on the care of our children. We've come here and loaded you with facts and studies and research, and then you stare blindly at us, and then we're supposed to just walk off. We need to figure something out and have some real discourse between you and the people you claim to represent. You set rules and adhere to them when it's in your favor. You denounce us when we applaud for opinions that we agree with, but then encourage the same behavior when you show us propaganda videos of max kids singing or to lift up one of your own in praise. You forbid us from using a name or address any individual board member directly, unless it's to directly address them, to thank them for their tenured service to the people as we bid them a fairly well. I was hoping that the current status of society and outrage from parents across the nation would have pushed us forward, but it has not. One of the board's first decisions was to alienate more people in the community by moving the meeting here to a gymnasium with poor acoustics, seating that needs to be moved and removed, and an overall worse place to hold a type of meeting like this. After we repeatedly asked to have it moved to a neutral location, you chose here. There are people not allowed on public school property because of different reasons, and now they're unable to have their voices heard. But unfortunately, this is just following past trends, where members of this board have alienated members of the community stating statements, belittling people that have just moved to the district a few months ago.
Thank you for coming. Thank you for your comments.
Jason Besner, followed by Jessica Anderson.
Jason Besner. Good evening, Dr. Heron and members of the board. I'm here as a WJCC parent to respectfully ask that you keep the mask mandate for all students. Masks are the best and most effective mitigation strategy we have in preventing the spread of COVID-19. Last week, over 700 students and 50 staff members were either positive or in quarantine. Imagine what these numbers will look like if we make masks optional. The CDC says that masks work best when everyone in the room is wearing one. And as a school division, you have stated that you intend to follow the guidance of the CDC. It's my hope that you continue to follow the guidance from health officials and scientists. I want to keep schools open for in-person learning, and I'm worried that without effective mitigation like masking, there will be, there will not be enough staff members to do this. In addition, it's the legal and moral responsibility of all schools to keep students' state from harm while they're in their care. Removing the best and most effective tool in preventing the spread of COVID would violate the standard of care that is expected and that WJCC has been providing. Masks need to do what school divisions in Fairfax, Arlington, and others have done, and come out forcefully to say that the mask mandate in WJCC is going to stay for the rest of the school year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Besner.
Jessica Anderson, followed by Karen Berksagel.
Hi, I'm Jessica Anderson, and I'm a parent of three children in each school level as well as a WJCC employee. I'm speaking today on Governor Youngkin's recent executive order, specifically line 2, which implies that participation of mask mandates may be optional for students. However, as you've talked about, SB 1303, Section 122 clearly outlines that in order to maintain in-person instruction in a manner in which adheres to the maximum extent practical to any currently applicable mitigation strategies for early childhood care, education programs, and elementary and secondary schools to reduce transmission of COVID-19 that have been provided by federal centers for the disease control and prevention. As CDC clearly states, schools providing in-person instruction should be prioritized to prevention strategies. Universal and correct use of masks should be required. Physical distancing should be maximized to the greatest extent possible. I also want to bring attention to the clear evidence of how masks have minimized outbreaks, not only in our school district, but other districts that have implemented mask mandates. While I'm thankful we have high vaccination rates among our staff and a relative rate among students, there are still risks. While I know there's a lot of debate on how COVID impacts children, we must remember that there are also adults in our building that are disproportionately affected by COVID. We also have families from all walks of life in our school division, many of which who are considered vulnerable, whether from underlying conditions or have multiple generations in their homes, some in advanced age, and these staff and family members also matter. We also cannot discredit the more than 700 children ages 0 to 17 that have passed from COVID-19, complications, as well as countless kids struggling with long COVID, MIS, diabetes, and so much more.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson.
Karen Berksagel, and then Hassan Lamont.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you all for your service. It's obvious from the questions that you ask that you take your responsibilities seriously and are very thoughtful. Thank you so much for having the Health Advisory Committee here. I totally agree with their conclusions. The science is clear that masking is an important mitigation strategy. You've taken the wind out of my sails by announcing your meeting on Friday because I was going to suggest that WJCC schools explore the option that is being taken by other school districts to determine whether an executive order can countermand current Virginia law. I'm sure you'll make the right choice, and I am absolutely in awe of the educators who are here tonight. I don't know how they do it, and we will get through this together. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Berksagel.
Hassan Lamont, followed by Michelle Simon. I am sorry, you guys, if I'm butchering names.
Good evening. Hassan Lamont from the city of Williamsburg. With all due respect, the panels and presentations that were given tonight at the beginning of the meeting seemed to present just a view, a dim view, well, basically just a one-sided view of the virtues of mask-wearing, without giving the benefit of having us have a presentation of a differing view from a scientific or a medical standpoint. Additionally, on several occasions, the impression has been given here tonight that we're looking at the specter of eliminating a COVID-19 mitigation layer, and that's not the case. We still have all of those mitigation layers in place, social distancing, hand washing, vaccinations, COVID testing, and notably mask-wearing. If any staff or student wants to continue to wear a mask, they can do so without any kind of interference. It's important to mention that the state superintendent of public instruction has been directed to rescind the interim guidance issued last year on COVID-19 prevention for Virginia pre-K through 12 schools. In the coming days, Virginia Superintendent of Public Instruction will be promulgating updated guidance that's consistent with the new executive order. With all the goings-on tonight notwithstanding, it should be interesting to see what the state's new guidance will look like and what this school board and this school division's response to that will be. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lamont.
Michelle Simon, thank you. Michelle Simon, followed by Corey Simon.
So my name is Michelle Simon. I have five kids enrolled in WJCC schools. I think we can all agree that Omicron is a game changer. With the previous variants, cloth masks gave us a measure of protection. But now, doctors, even the CDC agrees that cloth masks, while they stop large virus particles when consistently worn correctly, they do not stop the smaller aerosol particles of Omicron. There are those who are saying that Omicron is a good thing, that it will give the population what scientists call super immunity, stronger protection against new variants and even future coronaviruses. The CDC recommends N95s or KN95s. I did my research on N95s for kids. What I found, they've not been tested on kids. They're expensive, possibly fake, and made for single use. If each of my five kids wore N95s properly, we would spend, or we would need 550 masks per month and would spend approximately $1,400 per month on masks. And for what? To stop my kids from getting a virus that is likened to the common cold and severity? Furthermore, Dr. Tina Tan, a pediatric infectious disease doctor in Chicago, when asked about which type of mask children should wear, said not N95. It makes it very difficult to breathe. It is almost impossible, if an N95 mask is fitted correctly, to wear it all day. In conclusion, cloth masks do not work with Omicron. N95s are cost prohibitive and possibly dangerous. It's time to take them off and say, welcome to super immunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Simon.
Corey Simon, followed by Phyllis Easton. Oh, sweet baby.
Oh, sweet baby. My name is Cory Simon, and my speech is not going to be as good as my wife's.
Smart man.
CDC recommends masks. And it's, the CDC Disease Control recommends masks. Its research has not found statistics significance between mandatory masks for students and reduced transmission of COVID-19. And furthermore, it breeds different bacterias inside the mask while the kids are wearing them, they're inhaling that all day long. It inhibits the ability of children to communicate, delays language development, and impedes the growth of emotional and social skills. I think these things far outweigh the risk of, as my wife said, the Omicron variant, which is more likely to the common cold. I don't, I can't tell you how many times my children have complained about not being able to breathe or feeling a feeling or sensation like they're hyperventilating. We, as parents, should have the right to decide whether our children need to wear masks or not. If people feel that their children need to wear masks, I think they should have that right as well. And as a previous speaker said, it's, the flu's been around for as long as we can all remember it. It hasn't gone anywhere. We weren't wearing masks before. As long as I can remember, the flu's been around, and we've never, we've never worn masks. And the, our immune system is going to continue to help to reduce the risk more, and thank you so much. Please excuse us if we have to leave early. We have to get a child.
Thank you, Mr. Simon. Yeah, we've got a cute baby there.
Phyllis Easton, followed by Rachel Moore.
Good evening. Recently, Israel and the United Kingdom have released their research that four shots have been given, and there's little change in the antibodies that people have after four shots. Pfizer CEO was in Congress and said vaccines are not working. It's generally agreed that the vaccines are not going to help with Omicron. We don't know the impact of vaccines. Studies are showing that females, given the vaccines, have increased their menstrual cycle by one day. And some scientists are saying the vaccinated are more likely to give COVID than the unvaccinated. Many children in the last two years have not, have been denied the right to see and respond to their teacher's face and the faces of other children in the classroom. They have been denied one of the greatest learning tools that God gave us: the face. Very recently, the CDC admitted that masks have delayed children's articulation. Our mistake has been a total dependency on the federal bureaucracy known as the CDC. You know, the one that said, "No mask, wear a mask, double mask," and now in January of '22, only an N95 is effective. Don't worry, the White House will send you one from China.
Thank you, Easton. Ms. Easton, if you have comments, you want to leave with the clerk.
Rachel Moore, followed by Mia Schoenfeld.
Good evening. I'm Rachel Moore, city-county parent. Honored Chair and members of the school board, Dr. Heron, thank you for serving our community and for your leadership during these unusually difficult times. This is my 16th year serving WJCC as a middle school teacher. I'm also a parent of a middle school student. In both of these roles, I want to see schools continue to stay open and fully operational. I trust we all share that common goal, and in order to meet it, I urge the school board to continue all current COVID-19 mitigation strategies. Both our former government governor and our current governor have encouraged all to get vaccinated. However, significantly less than half of our student population is currently vaccinated, as you've heard this evening. Community transmission in our area continues to be high, and therefore I ask that the board continue all mitigation strategies, including universal masking, as they are essential tools to keep teachers and students in school and safely learning full-time. Our schools, like many others, as you've heard tonight, are struggling to find substitutes, so teachers are covering other teachers' absences during their only planning time. If mitigation strategies are dropped and absences increase, it will negatively impact our ability to keep students actively engaged in their studies. Teachers have always taken work home, but the workload has more than doubled, and planning has been cut in half in the middle school level. Teachers must have adequate time to plan and provide engaging, quality lessons so that our students continue to progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Moore.
Mia Schoenfeld, and you are our last speaker.
I'm a full-on pressure. All right, so I am, I'm a critical care nurse and a parent to an elementary school child. If you guys can bear with me for a second, I want to ask you to do me a favor. I want everybody to-
You have to direct your comments to the board.
Thank you, Ms. Schoenfeld.
Well, we all think that we're invincible to this thing, but I will tell you the reality of it is that our hospitals are inundated. People who don't have COVID are dying because we don't have resources. I will tell you, the hospitals around our area, we have run out of pads to put on people's chests to shock them back to life. I want to let you know that adults, you are the building block of our children's education. You are their safety net. One in every 450 kids in the United States has lost a primary caregiver or a parent to COVID. 72,000 children have lost two parents to COVID. This is an astounding number, and seeing what we see in the ICU, being that last person to hold your hand before you die, that, it hits home, and you don't want to be that parent that leaves your child alone. You don't want to be part of that family. So I, I ask you, as a member of our healthcare team, to please uphold the mask mandates. Please.
Thank you, Ms. Schoenfeld. That is the last of our public comments, and I do thank you all for coming out and for lending your voice to this, to this discussion. With that, I want to move on to item nine, our consent agenda for the evening. And I've got some reading to do here. I'll ask for my first consent agenda, so I think I need to ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda as I read it. Is that right?
See, I read the entirety.
Yeah, right, yeah, okay.
Sorry, what she said.
So I will be looking for a motion to approve this consent agenda to approve the financial report and monthly bills and payroll for November 2021, approve financial report and monthly bills and payroll for December 2021, approval of the minutes from January 4, 2022, budget work session, approval of minutes from January 4, 2022, meeting, approval of resolution R122, Principal Appreciation Week, approval of resolution R2-22, African-American History Month, approval of resolution R-3-22, Career and Technical Education Month, approval of resolution R-4-22, National School Counseling Week, approval of VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members, approval to revise policy DA management of funds, and approval of release from compulsory attendance, the case number R2122-09. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
I'm not sure who that was. I'm sorry. Ms. Cook, thank you, Ms. Cook. You guys sound alike over there. I gotta get used to it. All right, to Ms. Aller.
Just put Julie over here.
Ms. Aller.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. Moving on to, Dr. Beers had to step away for, yeah, he's not feeling well. Yeah, he's not feeling well. Item 10.01, approval of personnel actions.
Mr. Chair, I move approval of personnel actions as presented tonight.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Item 10.02, approval of personnel investigations. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that the school board uphold the superintendent's decision and the personnel investigation appeal discussed this evening, and authorize the chair to issue a written decision setting forth the school board's rationale.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. I don't believe we'll have discussion on this. Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Item 10.03, approval of purchase request, request of classroom projectors and teacher control panels.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve a purchase request for classroom projectors and teacher control panels to Optec for a total cost of $782,819.
And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any discussion on this item? We discussed in our last meeting. Ms. Cook?
No, I was just agreeing with you. Sorry, yes.
Yeah, any discussion? So we're looking at 263 classroom laser projectors with extended warranties, and I think this covers the rest of our classroom needs for projectors for a period of maybe five years. Is that, am I remembering that right?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right, if there are no other comments or questions on this, I'll ask Ms. Aller to call the roll.
Ms. Hummel. Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo. Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And thank you, Mr. Landers, for remaining vigilant on top of that need. Thank you, sir. Approval of amendment of the FY '22 Child Nutrition Services budget to $6,322,864. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amendment to the fiscal year '22 Child Nutrition Service budget to $6,322,864.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. And any discussion? Questions for staff on this?
Yeah, we discussed it at the last meeting.
Yeah, I feel like we landed pretty solidly at our last meeting on this one. Basically, an adjustment based on federal and local sales revenue that we had not anticipated, and we need our budget to balance at the end of the day as we use those funds. All right, Ms. Aller.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mrs. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Item 10.05, approval of award of contracts for RFP 21-15335, English Language Arts Adaptive Online Program and Literacy Intervention Resources. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we, just a second, sorry, that we move to approve award of contracts for proposal number 21-15335, Adaptive Online English Language Arts Programs and Literacy Intervention Resources to the following companies: Amplify, iXL, Excel Learning Systems, and Voyager, SOPRIS, SOPRIS, SOPRIS Learning, with projected annual cost of $78,750 for tier one, K to five, $78,450 for tier one, six to 12, and $34,390 for tier three, K through 12.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Give that to Ms. Hummel.
Sure, absolutely.
You've taken on a lot today. Thank you.
I'm good, yeah.
All right, any discussion, questions? We had a good bit of questions at our last meeting around this, and I think we also received some more clarifying statements from Dr. Heron since then. Yes, Ms. Cook?
I just would like to thank staff for their help with this one and sort of helping us understand, and then adding the sort of estimated annual cost to the motion. I thought it was just, it was very helpful to me, so I appreciate that very much.
So each year, as this moves forward, there's a cap of six years, and it helped me remember what happens at year two, beyond year two, if I'm remembering correctly.
I think the contracts beyond year two are on an annual renewal, and any time a purchase under any of the contracts would likely go over $100,000, that would come to the board for separate approval.
Yeah, thank you. All right. Okay, here are no other questions, comments, so I'll ask Ms. Aller to call the roll.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Ms. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye, thank you. And item 10.06, approval of amendment to Capital Projects Fund budget.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the amendment to the Capital Projects Fund budget to $15,220,595.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Comments or discussion? Ms. Aller.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Hunley.
Aye.
Mrs. Ordigo.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Mr. Dowell.
Aye. Thank you all, and that brings us to item 11.01, board member comments. If I may start with Ms. Hunley, we'll work our way around.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you to everyone that came out. I'm not boasting when I say this, but I have the unique opportunity of being retired, and I have a part-time job in addition to the board, where I get to work with students in the high schools. And what I'm trying to do through JMU is to recruit students to come back and fill the, you know, teacher shortage the state is saying we're going to have in the future. And so I have been in the three high schools, and I'll tell you, I am only supposed to work up to 15 hours, and I wish I could do more. I have, and I just enjoy working with the Teach For Tomorrow students. They are engaged, they, they see teachers juggling. They are helping out the best they can. They are learning, they are happy. They, the discussions we are having right now are on effective teachers, and they are, they are seeing what teachers do. So I do want to say to any of the teachers that are out there, they see you, I see you, we see you. You're doing a good job. Hang in there. And it's tough, but we are going to get through this. As I've always said, we can do big things. We are WJCC. The power of we.
Thank you, Ms. Hunley. Ms. Young?
Well, I just wanted to thank our staff and faculty and central office for all they're doing throughout this, this period of time. Hopefully, as our health specialists talked about, that this, we're expected this to peak on the 23rd of January. I'm really hoping that that, that comes to pass. But I want to thank them for all their hard work. I know you're tired. Just hang in there. We'll see how far we can go with this. Just want to thank my fellow board members, welcome Mrs. Ordigo and Ms. Hunley. Mrs. Ordigo was in, she was on screen last meeting, so I'm glad that she's here tonight. And that's all the comments I have to make. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Ms. Ordigo.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to acknowledge all the speakers that came out tonight and everyone that has emailed. Your opinions are important, and they are valuable, and they are part of the process of, of living in a, in a country where we get to say what we think, and, and that's, that's a wonderful thing, and that we can have different opinions and that we have a place to voice that and be respected. I, I, from many of the emails, it's funny, both, both sides, if I can generalize you into two sides, think that the other side is louder, and I assure you, both sides are equally loud. We do hear you all. And I, we are, as the chair said before, we, we are in a little bit of a legal bind right now, and we're going to do our best to figure this out in the most responsible way possible. I am a strong believer in, in individual liberty, but I understand fears about health and, and overburdening staff, which I think was sort of the loudest reasoning that I heard tonight. So we obviously have a lot of work ahead of us. But nonetheless, the work that I, that I know all the teachers, staff, administration, nurses in schools, nurses and doctors, and healthcare workers outside of schools are doing is incredible. It's, it's difficult, it's- It's, it's difficult, it's, I know it's, I probably don't even know, I say I know because I hear it, I'm just saying I hear you, I probably don't know how, exactly how hard you're all working, and I do thank you for that. And I, I think we are a little overdue in having this conversation, I'm glad we're finally getting the conversation started about, as Dr. Dolan said, an exit ramp, I think she called it, something on the horizon. I do think we need to start putting some timelines and dates and, and some firm goals in place that don't move. I think that's part of why people feel frustrated, because goals have been moving, and it's just difficult to figure out what, what we're working towards, but I think it's great that we're finally having that conversation. I wish we weren't starting it with butting up onto a, feels like a deadline in a few days, but we will, we will make the best of it, and I do appreciate everyone's input. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ordigo, Ms. Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to comment on our new location, and thanks staff for working so hard to make this happen, I love it. I think it's great, I can't wait to stream it and watch it and see what it looks like from tuning in on TV, but I, I do appreciate it, and I really do think it's fitting for us to meet on our own property, I think that's a good thing, and so I'm, I'm glad that that's happened, and I'm sorry it took a pandemic to make it happen, but I am glad that it, it did happen. I also want to echo my colleagues in just thanking all the speakers and the people who have emailed, please keep the comments coming. We take texts, phone calls, in-person meetings, comments from in-meetings and emails, so just, and, you know, maybe even Facebook messages, so, you know, just please keep the comments coming, they do inform our thinking and we appreciate them very much. And I want to kind of paraphrase one of our speakers to say, I agree that we will get there together, clearly we all have our, our gaze set on the same end goal, I think where we differ is just the timing and pacing of that, and so I think if we treat each other with respect and dignity, we'll all get to the, to the end of this race together and be exactly where we want to be, which is in-person with no mitigation strategies, which I think is eventually where, where we want to all be. And then I also just want to say that, you know, someone challenged us to spend some time in schools, and, and I don't know that I'm interested in doing that now when things are so overburdened, but we all have been in schools and we've all witnessed how exhausted teachers and staff are and how everybody's hanging on by a thread. It is palpable when you walk through a school, just how all hands on deck it is, and everybody, every single person, every single adult in that building is needed somewhere, or two places frankly, at one time, and it's, it's very real how hard everybody in this building is working to educate our kids and to keep them in buildings and keep them safe and learning and recovering from learning loss. So I just did want to acknowledge that all of us have witnessed it firsthand, and it is, again, palpable and very real. So anyway, that's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ms. Cook, Ms. Hummel.
I'm gonna basically reiterate what was said by other Board members tonight, I'm hanging my hopes on, that we're gonna reach this peak on January 23rd, that's, I'm, I'm hanging my hopes on that, and I wanted to also thank all the speakers that came tonight and that have emailed, and also want to thank my Chair, Mr. Dowell, because I'm not sure if people realize this, but as part of our Board practice, we, we receive everyone's emails, I'm speaking on behalf of the rest of you, but we read all of them, but so that you're not barraged by multiple, multiple emails back from us, we have kind of a standing operating procedure that the Board Chair responds on the behalf of the Board, so just know that if you have emailed us, we read your email, that you'll most likely have Mr. Dowell be the one that's responding to you on behalf of the Board. So I'm never sure if everyone kind of realizes that. And then I want to say that, can you hear me? That what resonated the most tonight was the exhaustion that I'm hearing from the teachers and the administration, and that they are at their wits' end trying to just keep kids in school, the school nurses are at their wits' ends, and I, I just want to say. Well, I, oh, okay, I'm gonna say, maybe this is telling me that I, my comments should come to an end, but anyway, I just want to say that I appreciate all of the sacrifices made by our, our teachers as well as our administration, because when we've got sub, the sub-fill rate in the 40%, and we have to have Central Office sub, there, there's a opportunity cost for that happening, and they're not able to do all the other things that they are tasked to do that are equally as important. So I just wanted to say thank you to Central Office for taking up the slack, the very real slack in the, the pinch points that everyone's dealing with, so that's it, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel, yeah, you're gonna hear some of the same sentiments from me and some others, but thank you to Mr. Landers and Dr. Heron, your entire staff for giving us this option, this option, meeting in this venue, a school that is our own, just a hop, skip and a step away from where we do our work sessions, it made sense, and by the way, it's so much larger and spacious than any of the other venues, it was about providing space for everyone that was willing to, yes, willing to come and speak and wear a mask for the time being, this is the, this is the order that we're under. And so I do thank you all for being here, I thank you, Mr. Landers, Dr. Heron, all your staff for pivoting in this direction, giving us this option so quickly, in a week, and getting it done, and it's, it's been nearly flawless, and I know you guys are taking notes too, so thank you all. You guys over there, you're, you're fantastic, fantastic. To the staff, to the teachers and faculty that have really kind of put their day jobs on pause, not even a hold, not even off to the side, we know that the, the work of administrating is still being done, but then going into the classrooms and going into the schools and supporting teachers that need your support in that way, thank you so much, thank you so much, and I, I don't know any other words to say, but thank you. We asked that we keep, we, we made an expectation that we keep our schools open five days a week, and when we did, for me personally, I didn't think that it would require senior leadership to go into the schools and do what you guys have already done, I didn't see that, but you guys rose to it, and so I, I am grateful, grateful for you guys being willing to do that, to rise to that occasion. Thank you to our speakers for being here, and more than just being here, for the civility and the trust and the respect that you show to one another as you aired your perspectives. This went very well tonight, and I'm just grateful for it, I really am. I want to hear you, I want each other to hear one another and to, and to find maybe some areas where in the center, there's some common ground, we know where, where our differences lie, but perhaps we can see where our common ground is, and that is that we care for every single student, our own children and those that are peers with our children in these schools, we care for every single one, and we do want what's best for each one. And I think that apart from the obvious challenges, I think we, we heard that loud and clear tonight, and we do care for our teachers and that the exhaustion that they're experiencing. Thank you for the emails, I get home, and go to the gym first, and then I'm gonna get back on the emails, but we read your emails, we read them all, every single one of them, and I had a very special one last night, a student, eighth grade, middle school, and he shared his perspective, and I had a moment to share why it's a challenging decision before us, and then I told him, get back to your studies, because these and greater challenges will be yours one day. It was just really encouraging, heartening that that student was engaged, it was really cool, cool. To Friday, yeah, our, our teachers and our staff are, are exhausted, they're, they're going well beyond the, the call of duty. Friday's meeting is about, about what is lawful, what we are permitted to do under law, as I see it, that's my perspective on Friday's meeting. And so I'm looking forward to, again, what we find tonight, what's probably transpired while we've been here, and what may transpire between now and Friday to help form our decisions on Friday. So thank you all for being here, and thank you for contributing to this process, that, with that, to get us out of here, I want to move to Item 12.01, Occurring Events. We'll get out of their way so they can figure that out.
Almost flawless.
Yeah. Hey, I, I didn't hear anything.
Sorry.
Right. January 19th, at 3:00 PM, a Policy Committee meeting, that'll be virtual and/or in Room 300, I think it looks like, VSBA Capital Conference. It's 100% virtual, yeah, okay, so it's got Room 300, I guess that's gonna be for staff then, we'll be in Room 300, okay. VSBA Capital Conference on January 24th and the 25th, gonna be a new Board Member and new Chair orientations on the 25th, I believe, also on the 24th, we'll be meeting with all four of our legislators, beginning as early as, I want to say 8:30, maybe 9 o'clock, but it'll be before the conference begins on the 24th, in-person in their offices. Student Advisory Committee meeting on January 26 at 3, that's gonna be at Jamestown High School, the Media Center, and then the Special Education Advisory Committee meeting on February 10 at 6:30, that location is soon to be decided. Night on here is our special called meeting that will be on January 21st, we're calling it 5:30, maybe 6:00.
5:30.
5:30, thank you, 5:30, January 21st, and that will be in the Annex, Room 300.
Sir.
Okay, and then closed session on, do this quickly, February 1st, Room 300, Work Session in Action Items on February 1st at 6:30, closed session on February 15th at 6:00, and then regular meeting on February 15th at 6:30, and that regular meeting on the 15th will be here at James Blair Middle, all are invited. And with that, this meeting is adjourned, thank you.